There you go. I'd like to call this meeting the Northwest Local Board of Education together. Mr. Bertram, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Detsel.
Here.
Mrs. Gauk. Absent. Mr. Detsel.
Here.
Mr. Unger.
Here.
Mr. Denny.
Here. Would you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have some meeting minutes from June 10th. Do I have a motion to approve?
So may.
Segment. Anybody have any questions or comments? Ready?
Mrs. Detsel.
Aye.
Mrs. Gauk. Mr. Detsel.
Aye.
She's absent. Mr. Unger.
Aye.
Mr. Denny.
Aye, motion passed. We have special recognition. Who is our special recogni... Paul, are you going to introduce?
Good evening. I do have some special recognition this evening of outstanding student athletes who participated in the state track and field tournament this past couple of weeks ago. I will start with Colrain High School. Dylan Wiseman is the athlete from Colrain High School and he could not be here tonight. But Dylan is a four-year letter winner in track. Dylan set the school record at Colrain High School for shot put this year at the Colrain Invitational with a throw of 58 feet, 4 inches, beating the old record by 3 feet, 5... 3.5 feet. Dylan made state track finals the last two years in the shot put and this year he placed ninth. He has currently enrolled and attending classes at the University of Tennessee where he will play football for the Tennessee Volunteers. So we congratulate Dylan on his accomplishments. And then for our Northwest High School student athletes, we would like to call up Joe Pollitt, the athletic director for Northwest High School.
Hey, thank you, Paul Etta. Before I talk about our track and field teams and the young men that will be here tonight, first want to apologize to our treasurer, Mr. Bertram. I tried really hard to stay within what I had estimated for the track and field awards budget this year and the guys just kept breaking their own school records all year. Then they go and top it all off by winning a state championship, so...
We'll take it out of your pay, Mr. Pollitt.
There you go. When we recognized our state placer in wrestling here in March, I stood at this podium and said that we were on the verge of the most successful sports year in the 40-year history of Northwest High School. The young men and women of our track and field program didn't disappoint us. After the success that we had last year, we had probably 90 percent of our varsity athletes returning and they rose to that challenge. The girls finished second in the league, the boys claimed their first-ever league title, the boys were a close second in the district meet and advanced to the regional meet in nearly every event. We were able to get these guys out to the state meet in both individual events and as part of the 4x100 meter relay where they not only wrapped up by far the most successful sports season... sports year in the 40-year history of Northwest High School, but they ended up with quite the exclamation point. Before I introduce Coach Lori Spence, I just want to thank the coaches and athletes, especially those in attendance here tonight. You guys were great to watch and even better to have in the building as representatives and role models for the underclassmen. So thank you guys for that. Now I'd like to go ahead and introduce Coach Lori Spence.
At this time, could we have President Dave Denny and his companion, President Jackson,
As fast as they are, they're late. So I guess they're not that fast. So I'll start with Devon, who is here. So Devon, you want to come on up? This is Devon Jackson. He is a sophomore at Northwest High School. This is his second appearance at the state meet. Last year, he went on the 100-meter dash. This year also, he returned to the 100-meter dash. He has a school record in the 100 with a 10.69 and he has a school record in the 4x100 meter relay with a 41.28 and also in the 4x200, which was not this year, it was last year, with a 129.07. He's first-team all-league, first-team all-city. He's a district champion in the 100-meter dash, district champion in the 200-meter dash, regional qualifier in the 200-meter dash, fourth place in the regions in the 100-meter dash, seventh-place finisher in the state. Last year, he just wanted to make state. He made state, he got 12th. This year, he's like, "Okay, I want to make the state, but I want to make the finals." So he made finals. Then he's like, "Well, maybe I want to make the podium." Because they take nine and only eight get to stay on the podium. So he did... he kept setting goals for himself every day. But very proud of him. He works hard. For a sophomore to be represented in the 100-meter dash is awesome. You don't see that a lot. Him and another freshman, Sean Crawford, who is the only two that represented a lot of the state two years in a row as a freshman and sophomore in Division One. I mean, it's a great accomplishment. So congratulations, Devon.
Do you want to introduce your families? Do you have any family here?
My mother, Tammy Gibson. And my auntie.
Jay's mom is here. So you want to come up and stand for Jay? Well, there's...
Dominic's.
Well, Dominic's is part of our relay team, so if we... Yeah.
Sorry, he's a home cleaning, so my apologies.
This is Jay's mom, all right? Actually, you know, behind every good man, there's a good woman. Well, that's the mom, that's right. Jay was here last year also. He runs the 110-meter hurdles. He holds a school record in the 110 hurdles with a 14.22. He also holds the school record in the 300-meter hurdles with a 38.2. He holds a record in the 4x1, 4x2, and 4x4 100-meter relay, which this year, that's one of the goals I wanted. I wanted to break the 4x4 meter relay because it was 1974, I believe it was set. So I really wanted that record this year. He also jumped 6'6" in the high jump. He is first-team all-league. He's the SWAC runner of the year. He's also the Southwest Ohio runner of the year, voted on by coaches. And he's in the top 25 in the city. They keep a list of the kids' top 25 in every event. I believe he's eighth in the city in the 300-meter hurdles. He's a district champion in the 110-meter hurdles. He's a district champion in 300-meter hurdles. He placed third in the 300-meter hurdles in the regions. He's also a third-place finisher in the state meet with a 38.24. Last year, he went in the 300-meter hurdles and finished seventh. Seventh place last year. So this is his third time.
Fifth.
Fifth, sorry. So many places. That's a bad problem, I guess. This is his third trip to the state meet. First time, he went in the 4x4 in the 300 hurdles and this year in the 300 hurdles and the 4x100 meter relay. So that is Jamil Trumble.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think it's appropriate his mother's here because when Coach Birkin was a student at Colrain, he let me know that he learned in genetics class that you get the athletic gene from the mother, so there we go.
I think that's the case, too.
I believe his dad still holds some records at UC.
He does, and even at the state, he does.
Yes, yes.
Charles Jimmerlin?
It's been debated at our council.
Quite a few times.
You can't argue with Mr. Smart.
Our next athlete is Miles Baldwin, also late and also very fast. Miles holds a school record at Northwest in the 200-meter dash with a 21.93, in the 400-meter dash with a 48.25, which he broke at the state meet this year, the 4x1, the 4x2, and the 4x4. He's first-team all-league, first-team all-city, regional qualifier in the 200. I pulled him out in the regions because he was in four events in the regions and that's tough when you're getting to that level. So I pulled him out. So I think he probably could have gone to the state, but I just thought it was one too many things, so we decided to pull him out in that. He's a regional champion in the 400-meter dash. He placed fourth in the 400-meter dash at the state meet. And he's in the top 25 all-time 400-meter runners in the city. I believe he is number eight in the all-time. They keep track of that. So that is Miles Baldwin. Next, we have our 4x100 meter relay team. You guys want to come up? Dominic and Devon, come on back up. I call this my perfect storm team because it's been a year. Last year, I really thought we had a chance to go to state in the 4x1 with most of the same kids, but Miles Baldwin... Oh, that just gives me chills when I see that. Yeah. He... Miles got hurt in the league meet last year, pulled his hamstring. So he didn't get to go. He would have went in the 400 with his time, he would have went in the 4x1. So I was kind of disappointed. So this year, all through the season, every time I see him pull, I was like, "Is he okay? Is he okay?" Really tried to, you know, stress on him about stretching because he wasn't always good. You see him over there, he's talking to his friend. And in track, one of those things that is kind of hard because they're not all together like basketball or football. They're here and there and everywhere, so you have to depend on them to do their job. So this year, I think he had that in the back of his head, so he was very good about stretching and cooling down after the race. And Dominic came from wrestling. He had, you know, some hamstring issues, some quad issues, so he was really trying to get himself together during the season. Here and there, he, you know, had to maybe back off, so, you know, it's like the wind before the storm. All these things have happening. Devon came out of basketball with an injured ankle, twisted his ankle. I think it was just open... was it open gym?
Actually, it was just in gym.
Yeah. Oh, it was in gym class, okay. Yeah, darn that. So he didn't get to run the 4x1 the very beginning of the season. We had someone, a replacement. The replacement was kind of like, "Wow, they're going to take me out." I'm like, "Yeah, but he has a place. He's our fastest guy. We've got to put him in there." And then, so we were doing pretty well and then Jamil, in the east-west game, gets a contusion on his leg. He runs into a bench. So no one would tell me. I'm at school, I come in from school and they're all standing in Caitlin's office and they're all ready to tell me. I was like, "What?" So they tell me he gets hurt. So, I mean, I really wanted to cry at that point because we worked so hard and that was districts. We had made the district finals and now we have to go in, you know, with an injured person. So we... he got over that. He made it through. I couldn't just pull him out because you have... it qualifies for the next level. So we, you know, got him through that. Caitlin, Ms. Caitlin, you want to stand up for me? I know you don't want to, but... She came in extra time on Saturday morning before races. After the meet, she'd come in for us and, you know, work on the kids and do what she could to get them ready. It was a real struggle with Jamil. I mean mentally and physically because when you're, you know, you're in pain like that and you've got to go out there and run, it's rough. But we made it through. We get to regions and our regional time was okay, but our handoff, I mean, I just, it was not what it should have been. So I didn't sleep all that night. I come the next day to practice. We made the finals in regions. I came the next day to practice thinking about it all night and I... Coach Miller, he's my relay guy, stand up, Coach. I came to Coach Miller and I said, "I think I've got to change the guys around." I don't know, you know, I'm like, I'm debating, "What should I do?" And he's like, "Well, you're dumb if you don't." But it wasn't the exact words he told me. I won't repeat what he said, but so we were kind of brave and we moved the relay team around and it... Dominic was third and we put him in the first place and moved Devon to the third spot. And our time wasn't great, but we made it to state. It was a 43. That's probably one of the slowest times we've had all season. I was like, "Oh, maybe that wasn't the right thing to do." So I was, you know, beating myself in the head, but we're at state, so we're preparing. We worked on handoffs that week. We rested Jay. Jay didn't run the whole week. Caitlin worked on him, stretched him, did what she needed to do and kind of got him ready, kept his muscles going. And then we get to state, we run, we had the fastest time of 42.2, I believe, we ran. We were... so we get lane four. And so we were all excited, but really nervous. We're in the hotel, I can't sleep. I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, we're in lane four. That means we had the fastest time. Everybody's going to be gunning for us." So we get there and I don't think I've ever been so nervous in my life. It was very exciting. So Dominic takes off and you'll see, Dominic takes off and he keeps it right with everyone. You know, it's like, in this video, it's the one that it's another team videotaping. Because I told my husband, he videotaped every single meet. I'm like, "Don't videotape because we'll get a video later because you can buy them." It's like, "So don't worry about it." Now, I'm like, "Why didn't I have a videotape?" Because he's like, "I can't see it the same. It's different when you're in the little picture." So he didn't videotape us. This is another team, I think Finch, Austin County Finch. So, but anyway, Dominic is in first spot, get up there, they're in front of us. I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, our handoff is great." So we get to the next one, I'm like, "Oh." Miles picks up and he's catching. Handoff is great. And then Devon just going around the corner is like, we're all screaming. You have never seen so many people all over the stands. We were crazy. I think the people behind is like, "Oh, my God, who are these people?" So then, when Trumble takes off the very last one, everyone stands like, "Oh, he took off." Coach Russo was sitting in front of us and like, "They took off too fast." But he was out... it was just so far ahead that it looked like we just were going to be out of the lane, but we weren't and we bring it home and it was awesome. So you'll see this in the video.
I didn't wear the socks we wore during state?
Yeah.
I knew I should have worn them.
Yeah, that was another thing. They had socks. It said, "Speed kills." Well, Ms... Coach Young, well, she's sitting back there also. She's our distance coach. She's supposed to be the one that keeps me calm, but she didn't that day. She went out, we went out and because we had some time, you don't want to sit at the track meal all day, so she said, "I'll buy you guys some socks." So that was an adventure, going around the mall and trying to find some socks, but... So you wore those. But that's... this is the video and sorry to go on, but it gives me chills every time I watch. I think I've watched this 100 times. So on YouTube, if you ever look it up all the times, it's probably me that has all the viewings. He's out in here.
Fans, we need to remind you that that time by Jacob Dunford in the 600-meter run is an Owens Stadium record, 408.2.
Miles, right here.
For Jacob Dunford.
Dominic's over here. I was looking at him, he's like running over, so... Not only did they... I know. Not only did they win, they broke the Jesse Owens Stadium record, which they've been running there for 10 years now and it's the third-time fastest time in meet history. So it's very exciting. That'll stand, I think, for a while. It all came together, so I call it my perfect storm because all the things that happened over this year, I didn't think we'd get there. I knew they had it. I don't know... I don't know if we knew we'd do that well, but it was so exciting and I still, every time I think about it, and these young men worked very hard. I have a colleague who made a comment in the paper, said, you know, "They work hard, they don't have all the talent." And we have talent and we work hard. And that combination, as you can see, is what brought us there. Very proud of you guys. You guys are awesome. They are team leaders for... I mean, they make times. We do 600, 300s, I know they just love them. And I give them a time and all season, we start with the pyramid and we break it down till we're at, you know, the top, we're running 90 percent and they make their times. And they... the younger ones, you know, they're good role models for the younger kids and I think that's why next year you'll see us back because those kids are trying to make, you know, get up to these guys. Devon's going to be back. He's going to be our leader for next year. We have a great junior class that's coming up for next year and you guys are part of that because you're leaders for us. And I thank you very much. It's been awesome to coach you guys. Congratulations. You deserve all that and more. Miles is going to Akron, so he officially got your classes today. Was that today you got your classes?
No, last week.
Last week? So he was telling me today what he had. So he's going to run for Akron. Dominic's going to Muskingham. He's going to play football, wrestle, and run track. Devon's going back to Northwest. And Jamil is going to Air Force Academy. He leaves July 16th. So they all have future plans and we're so excited for you guys. So congratulations. Yeah. And our 4x4.
No doubt.
Oh, yeah, I know. I see that.
They would have worked a 4x2.
I know. It's one of those things like...
Congratulations. And truly missed her work.
On three. One, two, three. Can you bring it along with you?
Drop my mom.
And her name is?
Adrian Temple.
That's right.
Yes.
We can have all four athletes up here with us.
Notice how many people are wearing blue and gold tonight, guys. Congratulations. Great job.
Nice and smooth.
Go faster than the slowest.
Well, let's see. We're going to be here long.
Okay, six miles. One, two, three. Great. Now, if I could have the athletes and their parents out the hallway, I'd like to get them together.
Great job, guys.
Great job. Congratulations.
Just picking up on Mr. Pollitt's words, I just, Northwest just had an outstanding year athletically as well as academically. I want to thank Mr. Bowling, Mr. Pollitt, and Coach Spence for all the things that they did this year. It was just, I mean, you guys just had a phenomenal year, both in and out of the classroom. So congratulations on the leadership that you guys have shown and brought these kids along to where the, you know, to some great things in their, you know, the futures. I mean, going to Akron and Navy and, you know, just, or is Air Force? I mean, just really some good stuff. So thanks again and congratulations. All right, where are we? Committee reports. Legislative update. Mr. Unger.
Thanks, David. I would have to warn the guys that you'll never be in as good a shape as you were in the day you won the race because after that, it goes a different direction. Anyway, the state biennial budget in Ohio is always due on June 30th and there's some last-minute sorting out of different items. That's House Bill 59. As far as it's concerned with... As far as it's concerned with education issues, what the Ohio School Boards Association would like to see is to restore the House levels of funding, which weren't in the Senate bill for disadvantaged students. The Senate removed a substantial amount of that, so that's still to be sorted out. One of the other things that affects us as a board is there's provisions in that bill that would replace publicly elected board members on joint vocational school districts with appointed individuals. Right now, the way that that works is the five of us decided that Jim would be the representative to Butler Tech and I'm more in favor of that rather than not having an elected person there. I guess the board could decide to appoint someone, but I prefer having an elected person because that gives voters a chance to speak about that person's qualifications every four years, whichever one of us that is. On a local note, the... there is going to be one countywide tax levy on the ballot this fall and that would be for the Cincinnati Zoo. It is their five-year renewal and, as some of you might know, I'm a member of the County Tax Review Commission and we just spent about four months going through the different items that pertain to the zoo. One of the highlights is, is that in 1993, the countywide tax levy was 40 percent of their revenue. The zoo has grown and made some good management moves and now that levy, which produces a little bit less than it did then because of reevaluation of property, that levy is only 21 percent of their budget. They are carrying about $8 million in debt from the expansion of that parking lot on Vine Street. By 2020, that debt should be below $2 million and by 2025, the last notes on that will be paid off, so the zoo should be debt-free. That levy, when it's on the ballot this fall, is about $10 per 100,000 evaluation. So, you know, as a board, we do understand there's other things out there that show up on the ballot and that will be the countywide tax levy. I'm thinking, I saw that Colrain Township decided not to run their police issue.
I believe you're right.
And that would be my legislative report connected with a little bit of local county business. So thank you, David.
Dan, did... was the Union Terminal, have they talked about putting that one up? Isn't that a countywide one? Or have they... I saw something in the news a couple of weeks ago.
Well, I would say this, Doug, you're not going to find a more enthusiastic person than Doug McDonald when it comes to running the Cincinnati Union Terminal. That levy, the commissioners agreed in 2004 to let that run twice. It ran in 2004 and it ran for renewal in 2009 and they agreed there would only be two levies for that. So when that expires at the end of 2014, there's not another levy scheduled. It's a fantastic place and they've done a great job building their endowment. The building is actually owned by the City of Cincinnati and that's been a big sticking point because, you know, the City of Cincinnati needs to take care of their assets that they have and it's in a 99-year lease that started in 1986 and that's not the county's responsibility to fix that building. That said, I think the museum center's a fantastic operation that needs to find a better landlord. That's just my personal opinion, but that's the city's building, so it's not... that building doesn't belong to Hamilton County. So thanks for asking.
Any other questions for Dan? I'm going to back up a step. I jumped by a whole bunch of things. Go back into public presentation and reports from certificate or licensed, classified, administrative, reports from school-related organizations. Hearing none. I do have one community communication. Kevin Denoma, a parent and resident, wants to talk about a proposal for boys volleyball program at Colrain High School. Kevin? We're going to limit you to three to five minutes.
It's great to hear of the recognition and support of sports that you have here in the district and that's why I'm here. Good evening. My name's Kevin Denoma. I'm the father of twin boys who just graduated from St. Ignatius Elementary and they're currently enrolled and are going to be attending Colrain High School this fall. They've played, Ryan and Ben have played volleyball at St. Ignatius Elementary for four years and they've thoroughly enjoyed it. They've played teams from St. James, St. Jude, St. Al's Visitation, and Bridgetown Middle School, among others. Although they are looking forward to going to Colrain, they were disappointed to find that Colrain does not have a boys volleyball program. I've talked with the principal, Maureen Heinz, and the A.D., Dan Bolden, and found that their request must be initiated through the Board of Education and that's why I'm here. I've also talked at length with Oak Hill's volleyball coach, Chris Mormon, and also Sean Tierney, Ohio High School Boys Volleyball Association South Region Representative, and he's also the head coach of volleyball at Elder. I would like to give you a brief overview of the sport with a preliminary discussion of the cost involved and the sources of... possible sources of funding. In researching the topic, I found that boys volleyball at the high school level is alive and well in the greater Cincinnati area. There are 18 high school boys teams in Southwest Ohio alone, among them LaSalle, Elder, St. Exum, Moller. Also, nine out of 10 schools in the Greater Miami Conference have boys volleyball teams. Most started their programs in 2001. The only school in the GMC that does not have a boys volleyball team is Colrain. Although boys and men's volleyball is less prevalent when compared with girls and women's volleyball, the sport has been around since its invention in 1895. The U.S. men's volleyball has been Olympic sport since 1964 and in fact, the U.S. men's team has placed first in 1984, 1988, and recently in 2008. On the collegiate level, locally, both UC and Xavier have men's volleyball programs. An interesting aspect of volleyball that I've found at the middle and high school of volleyball that I've found at the middle and high school level is that it's an equalizer, meaning you don't have to be six foot eight to be a good player. If you don't have the skills, it doesn't matter how tall you are. In elementary school play, some of the best players I've seen on the court were five foot four and under. It's a sport that requires minimal equipment, a gym, a net, knee pads, and a ball. With the girls volleyball program currently established at Colrane High School, the equipment's already in place, and players would only need to purchase knee pads. As far as team size is concerned, to field a volleyball team, you need a minimum of six players. With my sons, I already have one-third of your team here. A fully-rounded team usually consists of 10 to 12 players. And any proposal for adding a sport or extracurricular, I realize, cannot take place without a discussion of funding. I know over the past several years, budgets have been a primary focus. I fully understand and appreciate your efforts to maintain a quality educational system while at the same time being fiscally responsible. I know that Northwest School, Local School District also recognizes the value of extracurricular activities in the educational process, as was shown this evening. With the physical infrastructure of girls volleyball established, already established at Colrane, I see minimal additional expense in initiating a boys program. And here's a brief overview of the cost and resources associated with the sport. Equipment. As I mentioned before, volleyball requires very little equipment. You need a court, a net, and volleyballs. Initially, the girls volleyball program in place, that need is already met. Uniforms. In a startup program, use soccer jerseys, or even just school t-shirts with a number screened on the front and back will work. Although you might intimidate your opponents when you walk in the door, you don't need a Nike or Mizuno volleyball jerseys to start off with. And transportation. Only, with only 10 to 12 players on a team, a bus would seem like overkill. I'm not sure what the district's transportation policy is regarding sports in the away games, but at the very least, parents could provide transportation to the games. Time and funds permitting over time, it could be moved up to one-way transportation to games if necessary. And the coach's salary, at this point, I don't have information as to what the district pays for coaching positions. And facilities. Boys volleyball is, boys volleyball is played in the spring. Tryouts for the team begin the day after the wrestling season and basketball tournaments are finished. With the girls volleyball season in the fall, there would seem to be little or no conflict over gym space and time. I'm also aware that there's a small practice basketball court in the Butler Tech building behind the school, and that could suffice if necessary. As far as funding is concerned, here's some options. I know you have participation fees, and that's $200 per player. Could result in approximately $2,000 going towards to frame the cost of the sport. Door receipts. In addition to football, basketball, and wrestling, volleyball is one of the few high school sports that has the potential to bring in money at the gate. Typically, boys volleyball game tickets are priced at $5 per adult and $3 per student. And grants. There is a grant available, actually, through the Ohio High School Boys Volleyball Association, and provides a grant program and financial incentives to high schools starting new sports, new volleyball programs. The grant consists of $1,000 for the first year and 500 for each subsequent year for a total of three years. And they also provide a dozen volleyballs to get started. And last but at least, fundraising is always an option. Down the road, in terms of generating interest in qualified players for the sport, by the time student center Colrane, the same paradigm would apply to starting boys volleyball on the middle school level, since both White Oak and Colrane middle schools have existing girls volleyball programs. This would enable a feeder system for boys volleyball at the high school in the same way girls volleyball operates, and I believe Oak Hills has a system at the middle school level. I hope I've been able to, to give you a framework to view the status of boys volleyball and its potential at Colrane High School. My goal is to bring the topic to your attention in going forward, facilitate the process by inviting coaches and those experienced in running successful volleyball programs to answer your specific questions regarding logistics and funding. Sean Tierney, the Southwest Ohio Region Representative for Ohio High School Boys Volleyball Association, has also offered to share his expertise on the subject. I want to thank you for the opportunity to propose boys volleyball at the high school level in Northwest School District and specifically Colrane. Boys high school volleyball is thriving in and around Cincinnati. From elementary school to college and beyond, boys and men's volleyball is growing in popularity. It's not a new sport, since Greater Miami Conference schools have been playing for over a decade. It's an exciting sport to watch and play, and my boys, they're here tonight. They love to play the sport and would love to play for, they'd be proud to play for Colrane. If there's anything more I can do to aid you in making boys volleyball program at Colrane a reality, I'd be more than happy to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I want to thank you. I do want to share a few things. This was actually brought up, gosh, when I first got on the board, about 15, 16 years ago.
Okay.
But certainly, the grants and everything that you've provided is, I mean, I think it's worth discussion. But a couple things with Title IX, whenever you add a boys sport, you've got to add a girls sport. And in this district, we have two high schools, so when we make a decision, it's not just based on Colrane. Then we'd also need to add that sport at Northwest, and we don't just have two middle schools, we have three middle schools. So there's a lot more to look at, but I'm certainly, you know...
Does Title IX apply to high schools? I thought it was more to college.
Uh, no, it's high school.
Okay. And is it in terms of the number of, of teams, or is it in the number of individuals participating with the funding?
It's the number of teams, I believe.
The number of teams.
Teams or individuals?
No, it's, I believe it's...
I'll defer to you on all things Title IX.
I'd have to look that up, but I'm pretty sure it's the number of, the quality of the number of teams that are opportunities available.
Right.
Something we can explore in a...
Right. The other issue is the spring sport, and gym time is at a premium because of the weather in February and March. Our baseball and softball teams use the gyms for practices, tryouts, all of that as well. So that becomes a problem.
Is there an equal number of athletic teams, women and men, at Colrane in Northwest right now?
I believe so, but I'd have to do a...
Okay.
I have a list of the, of the sports, actually. I think there's like 21 of them. The ones that are, let's see, you've got football, boys, basketball, softball. Is that boys or girls?
Girls.
Girls. Boys soccer, wrestling, baseball, girls soccer, girls basketball, track, girls volleyball, swimming, boys tennis, golf, wrestlets, cross-country, cheerleading, girls tennis, bowling. Looks like cheerleading, it's here twice. The academic quiz team and the chess team. So I see, you know, there's, other schools have, I'm sure, faced this obstacle, and I'd be willing to investigate and see how they've overcome that issue.
We're not gonna solve that tonight.
Right.
Can you look into that and then maybe engage, I'm sorry, I've lost your name.
Denoma.
Sorry about that. Engage him and, as a resource, and maybe pull together some people and at least come up with some preliminary recommendations. I don't know what's a decent time, whatever a decent timeframe is. Get back to us.
That'd be great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And welcome to Colrane High School.
Thank you.
All right, where am I now? Special presentation, Mr. Lawler.
Oh, you did pull by all those, didn't you?
I did. Blew by a lot of stuff. Welcome back.
Thank you very much. As you know, we've been working on the House Bill 264 project, which is energy efficiency initiatives that we're currently involved in. And tonight, we have a very special presentation to the board related to those projects. I don't want to steal anybody's thunder about describing it, so I'll just introduce the folks who are gonna participate. We have, our partnership is with the Greater Cincinnati Energy Alliance, and we have Chris Meyer, who's the Commercial Operations Director, Josh Hertz, Hertzler, which is the, who is the Commercial Operations Associate, and Andrew Wiggers, who is the Marketing Manager for the Greater Cincinnati Energy Alliance. And also, from our contractor, Train, we have Bob Hahn, who's a Solutions Account Executive. And I'm gonna turn it over at this point to Chris Meyer from the Greater Cincinnati Energy Alliance.
Hi there. Chris Meyer, Greater Cincinnati Energy Alliance. The Energy Alliance is a local nonprofit dedicated to making Cincinnati more energy efficient. There have been advances in technology that allow you to capture more energy, save more energy in your appliances, in your light bulbs, in your HVAC equipment. When you combine those technological advances with the ever-rising price of power, there's a lot of money that can be captured. Energy efficiency isn't really just about power. It's not really about gigawatts and thermes of natural gas. It's about money. Energy efficiency is, in fact, a powerful economic development tool. And in 2009, the Energy Alliance got a grant for $17 million from the Department of Energy. We took that 17 million and turned it into $50 million worth of economic activity in Greater Cincinnati. The single biggest chunk of that 17 million has gone to Northwest School District. The Energy Alliance, our program was to incentivize school districts and other commercial institutions that include schools, institutional institutions, to provide grants to upgrade the efficiency of the buildings. So we actually have a check here for $400,000.
Oh, Ross.
Actually, I think, I think, I'll, I'll finish my speech, and Bob can come up and we'll hand it over. But the speech, or the, the check itself went towards making the buildings more energy efficient, and that included the, the two high schools that you mentioned, the middle schools and the elementary schools. All in all, we, we touched on 17 different schools in the district, or 17 different buildings in the district. The actual upgrades included, like I said, lighting upgrades, boiler upgrades, direct digital controls of your equipment. So like, your phones have gotten smarter. The computers that run your HVAC equipment have gotten smarter, too. So the Energy Alliance will continue to make Greater Cincinnati more energy efficient as we go forward. There are two main barriers to energy efficiency. Those barriers are, you don't know how much it costs upfront, and the Energy Alliance can help you identify those costs. And the second barrier is, you have to pay for it all upfront, but you get the savings back over time. So the Energy Alliance is there to help solve those two problems. On the, the project we did here in the Northwest School District, we worked with Train. They were the prime contractor on it, and they, they were the guys who did all the actual work. Bob, did you want to come up? Do you have anything to add to that?
No, I just, I'll pick a brief second, but one thing I want to say is, kind of when we started this project, we had, you know, a goal in mind of working with the Greater Cincinnati Energy Alliance and utilizing this grant to help offset the cost of the project. And, you know, I wanted to thank you guys for all your hard work you put into getting this grant to come to fruition for the district, and thank the district, Randy and Dan, for, for that. I know, Randy, you dumped a ton of your time into helping meet all the, you know, requirements, and so thanks, and this is good news, 400 grand. So, thanks.
All right. Randy?
Come on up in the center.
Our board president, David Denny, doing this?
Oh, man.
Can we cash that?
Yeah, too. I'd like Dr. Lawler in here, too.
Dr. Lawler.
Okay, on three. One, two, three.
Dan, you gotta stand in the back.
Okay, on three. One, two, three.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
I like this check.
My pleasure.
Thanks for coming.
Mr. Detzel wants to know if we can cash that.
I'll take that over to the bank.
We, we dropped off a real check a couple of weeks ago.
They did mention that one doesn't have any routing.
And it cleared.
And it cleared.
I'll write, I'll write a couple on there.
That's even better.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Let's give you a quick update on where we are with the projects. We actually had two contracts going. One was for the lighting and some stuff I already talked about a number of times here, and that contract's completed, and that's what allowed them to release this money to us. So over $4 million of the project is 100% complete, and that contract has been concluded. We still have one going, and it's on the boilers. The boilers at Colrane High School are being dismantled. They have to be cut apart inside the building. They've taken the windows out at the backside there to get it out. They're putting about a third of the way done, or maybe half of the way done, on two old boilers. And when those are cut out and completed, then they'll install the new boilers, and they can bring those in through the doorways. You can tell you how much more energy efficient they are than what they have to do now. White Oak, the boilers have been dismantled same way, except not throughout the window. They had to be cut out in the boiler room and then trucked out through the hallway, but those are gone, and so they're ready to be reinstalled there. And then at White Oak, we're also replacing the Univent heaters, which are the individual units in the classroom. All those have been removed, and they're in the process of reinstalling those. So we're in pretty good shape on the boilers and the heating systems. And then one more summer project is the hot water boiler at Northwest High School, which has some asbestos work needs to be done first, and then that'll be dismantled. And so, again, we're in good shape. Everything's progressing the way it should, and I think we'll be all set to finish up by the end of summer.
Great stuff.
All right.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we're back to committee reports and updates. Student Achievement Liaison Report. Mrs. Detzel, do you have anything this evening for us?
We do not have anything this evening, Mr. Detzel.
Thank you. Mr. Detzel, do you have anything from Butler Tech?
Yeah, just a short little update. We had a presentation by Schumacher Dugan on the bioscience education facility. Just kind of giving us an overview, just kind of, I'll pass this around so you can see. They have some drawings of what their plans are. In September, we'll have the actual presentation and how we're gonna pay for this.
Have they had that answered yet?
We don't have an answer yet, so we'll, we'll find that out in September, but plans are it should be ready by start of school 2015. So...
How big a space is that?
I want to say it was 18,000 square feet to start out with, and then, you know, they have some drawings of additional buildings and different...
Is it part of their main campus, or is it...
No, this, this is actually, this property is at Cincinnati Dayton Road and I-75. When you're heading north, before you get to the exit, it's off to the left.
Okay.
And Butler Tech had purchased the property four years ago, and we're just now getting some drawings done, and we should know something by September, if it's a go or not.
All right. Very good. Anything else?
That's it.
Other than your 20, 27-page report that you gave us?
Please.
Other than the 27 pages of report that you gave us?
There you go. Everybody's got a copy.
All right, I believe that is it for me. Dr. Jackson, you're up.
Before I get into the consent items, I just want to highlight a couple of things. First, it's an update on Field Turf is complete. They're actually using it today. So I know that's been a long process to get that taken care of, but I do have to say that Field Turf USA did a very nice job of following through and finishing up that installation. It looks, it looks fantastic.
Was that subbed out, the, the installation?
No.
Was that Field Turf people? Yeah, they worked around the clock.
Yeah, they did. They did a great job. I mean, I was down there on it today.
The removal was subbed out, but not the, not the installation.
The installation, was their people, and they did a great job.
And then I also want to just mention briefly some preliminary report card data. The report card won't come out till later this August when we have value-added data, and we're transitioning into a new report card. So once we have that information, we'll have a full presentation of what the new report card means. But I just want the board to be aware that in terms of our indicators, six of our schools increased in the number of indicators, and the four of them actually decreased. Overall, the district looks preliminary that we got 18 out of 24 indicators, where last year we got 21 out of 26. They removed two of them, so it would have been about 20 out of 26, so it's a slight decrease. However, our performance index actually is the highest it's been in quite some time. I have, my data goes back to 2007, '08, and if this holds up at a 96.2, it's the highest it's been in the past five, six years. But it's gonna look completely different than what we've had in the past. So once we get the final data, and we'll do a full presentation to the board, so they understand where we are with that. And then finally, I just want to acknowledge Roger Argulis, to show his dedication. How many people come to a board meeting their last week?
I don't know.
Well, there's one right there, Roger Argulis. So his, his last day is Friday, and he's here at a board meeting.
Bless you, Roger.
I'm not sure if that's good or bad, but you're here, so I just want to acknowledge. So moving on to the consent items, we have, on page six of your agenda, we have two fiscal items, the Report of the Treasurer and the Purchase of Investments for May 2013. Randy, did you have anything you needed to say on that?
No, I'll, I'll have more later in the meeting.
Okay. Under Personnel, we have two certified resignations. We have eight extra-duty resignations, and we have one classified resignation. The superintendent recommends the Board of Ed approve the consent items.
Second.
Moving to second. Anybody have any questions or comments? Randy?
Mrs. Detzel?
Aye.
Mr. Detzel?
Aye.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Denny?
Aye. Motion passed.
Under Other Items, we have six different fiscal items. Randy, do you want to go through those, or is there anything you need to explain?
I certainly can.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes, the first item, a Certificate of Estimated Resources, Appropriation Certificate, Certificate of Amounts Available. This is the final for fiscal year '13. Temporary appropriations are included for fiscal year 2014, and I'll come back to you with permanent appropriations no later than October. Advances and transfers, I did leave at your place a replacement to the appendix that's in there. I got news late last week that... I got news late last week that ODE was not going to be able to pay the cash advances we put in for two of the grants, so it increased the amount that I needed to request for advances. Just so happened, Title I, school-wide, has a $336,000 project cash request that we had in there, so, yes, it was definitely needed to make that change. Item D are the new funds that we're requesting for fiscal year 2014. Item E, Petty Cash and Change Funds for fiscal year 2014. These are the same with one change. We've talked about Northwest High School quite a bit today. Because of their success, I had to increase their change fund for this next year, because they're definitely ringing in, ringing in the money at the gates, so happy for that. And then, Item F, final item, Self-Funded Workers' Compensation. It's going very well. We are saving about a quarter million dollars a year so far on this program, so I ask that we continue this using Fund 027 for the upcoming fiscal year.
The Treasurer and Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the fiscal items as listed. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Burtrick.
Mrs. Detzel?
Aye.
Mr. Detzel?
Aye.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Denny?
Aye. Motion passed.
Under General Business, we have the Liability and Property Insurance Contract, and I was going to let Todd Bowling kind of explain the process we use for that and the increase in the rates.
Tom McGillicuddy is basically our insurance broker for the SIC Group. He goes out and he negotiates the best contracts that we can get with each of our fleet insurance and our liability insurance. The entire school insurance industry has been increasing due to the past couple of years. Tom's held us back the last couple of years with no increases whatsoever, but this year, there was an increase. He even negotiated us a 5% decrease last year, but he's a broker that goes out, gets the best price for board, and then presents it to Randy.
So, the property insurance will be with Ohio Casualty. A premium will be $74,090 for that. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Ed approve the business item as listed. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Anybody have any questions, comments?
You might not have the answer to this in front of you. Do we still have the same level of coverage at these rates?
Yes. Being in the insurance business 33 years, this is a bargain. These prices, these are good rates.
One thing Tom's been able to do for us the last five years is, he's been able to come in. He's a former executive for Cincinnati Insurance, not for Cincinnati Insurance, Great American Insurance in Cincinnati, and he's been able to help us review and reevaluate where our coverages should be, and in many cases, we were underinsured, and he's been able to increase those amounts for us while decreasing the cost for us through the years, so he's done a fantastic job for us.
How does our claim experience, dollars and number of claims, compare to other years over this past year?
It wasn't so much us. He said overall, claims are way up. If you look over the past five or 10 years, the weather is drastically affecting rates, lawsuits against schools due to reduction in forces, but our claims this year were a little up, but not high compared to the past.
In number of incidents or in dollars?
Incidents, is my understanding.
Yes.
We had a couple large storms last year that caused some damage, and we also had some vandalism, and there was a couple of roof issues that are extremely expensive. We had the Houston roof damaged. Someone actually poked holes to the top of it. We do a monthly inspection, but even a couple of weeks of holes in the roof where the under, I don't know, the lining underneath got destroyed, so that had to be ripped up to the deck, and that was an expensive claim that we had back in the late summer. We had a couple of pretty severe storms that caused electrical issues, through electrical strikes, and those were quite expensive as well.
If I have any further questions, I'll ask you later. Thank you.
Randy?
Mrs. Detzel?
Aye.
Mr. Detzel?
Aye.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Denny?
Aye. Motion passed.
Under Personnel, we have several items here. We have one approval of initial administrative appointment. We have three initial appointments. We have one employee to be rehired. We have one approval of change of status. We have one approval for extended service contract. We have five for approval for extra-duty contracts, one approval for volunteer coach, and then we get into several policies that were described last meeting. So, under Personnel, we have three revised board policy and the approval of five new board policies that were presented at last board meeting. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Ed approve the certificate-licensed items as listed.
Sumo.
Second. Moved in second. Anybody have any questions, comments, thoughts? A lot of stuff here.
We did go through all that at the last meeting. For those that didn't have the wonderful opportunity to go through that blizzard of paperwork, I think we got into double letters with our...
Yes.
A through Z, and then double H or whatever it was.
One of my favorite all-time meetings.
So, we did, as a board, we did have an opportunity to review those. Thank you.
I would just go on to say, hiring Luke Starnes makes me feel old. You can relate to that. I've known that young man since he was a very small child, so...
He's still very small.
Yeah, but he's very strong. Good kid. Good young man. How about that? Randy?
Mrs. Detzel?
Aye.
Mr. Detzel?
Aye.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Denny?
Aye. Motion passed.
Right. This time, I'd like to introduce the newest member of our administrative team, Mr. George Sturgeon. He was just approved. Do you want to stand up for a second, George? And I'll, normally, our HR director does this, but she is out today, so I will try to do this. Northwest Local School District would like to welcome Mr. George Sturgeon as the Assistant Principal for Coleraine Career Center and Northwest Career Center. George comes to us from Hamilton County Educational Service Center, where he was a school improvement administrator. Prior to that, he was a special education teacher at Glen Estee High School in West Claremont School District. He began his career in education after working in business as a special ed teacher in Campbell County Schools. George has a Business Marketing Degree from University of Cincinnati, a Master's Degree in Special Education from Northern Kentucky University, and a Master's Degree in Instructional Leadership from Northern Kentucky University. George is here tonight with his wife, Melanie Sturgeon. He has three children, Taylor, who is a student at UC, Caitlin, who is starting at the Ohio State University in the fall, and Noah, who is a seventh grader. Please join me in welcoming Mr. George Sturgeon. Thank you, George. All right. Page 11 of the agenda. We have, under Classified Personnel, we have three initial appointments, and we have the approval of four changes in status, and the approval of one new job description. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Ed approve the classified items as listed.
Sumo.
Second.
Moved in second. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I did read the item you sent out about the locksmith position. That'll just mean this person will develop his credentials to the point where he's...
He already has them, but yeah, he'll maintain them.
That's what that was. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Randy?
Mrs. Detzel?
Aye.
Mr. Detzel?
Aye.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Denny?
Aye. Motion passed.
Under Curriculum, we have four board revised policies that were presented at the last meeting. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Ed approve the curriculum items as listed.
So moved. Second. Moved in second. Anybody have additional questions or comments about those? Randy?
Mrs. Detzel?
Aye.
Mr. Detzel?
Aye.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Denny?
Aye. Motion passed.
Under Student Services, we have two district handbooks to approve that were presented at the last meeting. We have three revised board policies, and we have one extra, extended field trip for the Northwest High School cheerleaders to attend Miami University in Oxford, July 7th through the 10th. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Ed approve the Student Services items as listed.
Sumo.
Second.
Moved in second. Anybody have any questions, comments, thoughts, ideas? Randy?
Mrs. Detzel?
Aye.
Mr. Detzel?
Aye.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Denny?
Aye. Motion passed.
And then, finally, under Miscellaneous, we just have the one board voting method policy that was presented at the last meeting for approval. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Ed approve the miscellaneous item as presented.
So moved. Second. Moved in second. Anybody have any questions or comments? Randy?
Mrs. Detzel?
Aye.
Mr. Detzel?
Aye.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Denny?
Aye. Motion passed.
And then, one other item for information, is just so you're aware, the district handbook for the Student Activities Handbook, that will be, we will bring that to the next board meeting to request approval without changes on that, just so you're made aware of that. And the only other item I have is regarding the July board meetings. We currently have a July 22nd and a July 29th board meeting. Originally, we had a July 8th one that was canceled. We are awaiting someone for Northwest High School to be the new football coach, and we should have an answer probably in the next couple of days. I was hoping to maybe schedule a board meeting for some personnel items, including that one, in the next couple of weeks, if possible. So, I wasn't sure if we could come up with an early July meeting to do some personnel.
If it's okay with everybody else, back to the 8th. I know originally, we had a conflict, but we will be in town, so we're okay on the 8th.
It's fine with me.
Or if it's a short, I mean, if it's short and you want to do an early morning, whichever works.
Would that give you enough time to accomplish what you need to do, Andrew?
I believe so. I was looking at later in that week, maybe that Thursday, the 11th, instead, if possible. That would give us a little extra time.
I can do that.
That's fine. Are we talking morning?
We can do it whenever. It was, it would basically just be to do some personnel items, and that's it, so we can do 7:30 a.m., we can do 7:00 p.m., 7:00 a.m., I mean, whatever.
I'm fine with 7:00 o'clock in the morning on the 11th.
Oh, it's 7:30.
7:00 a.m. in the morning.
That works.
That means I get up at 5:00. So, 7:00, okay, Pam?
Oh, sure, Daniel. You remember this.
It helps me get to work on time. It helps me get to work on time, if I could do 7:00.
What's nice, from here, our standpoint, once we adjourn from that meeting, we just go ahead and go home, just like, so...
7:00 in the morning, you do?
Hey, I'm going to breakfast.
Yeah, we like to...
Now, I'm motivated. Thank you.
Oh, that makes you even have a KRL.
So, we'll have a July 11th, 7:00 a.m. board meeting to do some personnel items.
And then, now, the other two, I know we had scheduled the other two. We still need both.
The 22nd is a definite. The 29th will only be if needed.
Okay.
And we'll know on the 22nd on that one.
And if for some reason, you're not ready for the 11th, we can always cancel that.
Sure.
Okay. Well, that's, we're going to schedule the 11th.
Right.
Dan, can you get to work if it's 7:30? He's got an hour drive.
I'm okay.
He does. Well, yep, it's because he lives an hour from here.
And make it an hour drive.
He's had an opportunity to move.
I'm trying, baby. I'm trying.
Thank you.
I think that's more for you than it is Randy.
You know, I'm a morning person.
I promise I'll keep it short. That concludes the superintendent's items.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. It's an opportunity for our community communications for any of you to ask any questions of any of us about anything that's happened this evening. Seeing no hands, we'll move on to other board items. We will entertain a motion to go to executive session in a moment, and we will not take any more action after that. But Dan, do you have anything else?
I'd just like to welcome our new employee and his wife and your family, and I hope all the best things happen.